Monday, October 14, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Members present are David, Kenny, and Susie. This time we move on to the recognition of the high school cheerleaders and Mrs. Angie City. I'd like to introduce all the board members to you girls, if you don't know them. You know all of us. One here on my left is David Huggins. Kenny Whitson, Jennifer Turner, and Adam O'Champ are our superintendents. My name is Susan White. This time, Mrs. City.
Have invited Mrs. City, Coach City, Mrs. Bryant, Coach Bryant, to be recognized in front of our board today for all the hard work, and I know how much hard work that you guys have put in. Early mornings, late nights, multiple practices, time on the road, and all you do for our sports teams as well, not only that, but our schools. On behalf of the Stigler Public School Board of Education, we'd like to honor you guys with a certificate, Stigler Public Schools Certificate of Excellence. We've printed one of these off for each of you guys to express our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance, exceptional commitment to Stigler Public Schools, your teamwork, best ever finish in school history, third place in state. So congratulations to each of you. Last time, and I'll ask Stigler News, you guys went outside and took a picture. If you guys would like to take a picture, we'd like to make that available as well. Mrs. City, congratulations. Thank you. I don't know if you have a captain or anybody that wants to speak or say a few words, but we'd love to invite them to the microphone.
I do have a captain. I don't have anything prepared. A little late notice.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. We are super proud of these girls.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Aliyah King, am I saying that right? Aliyah. Would you like him to go out front to take a picture? When you get your certificate, if you guys would head out front. Kelly Sloan. Chloe Carolyn. Carlin. Gillian Randall. Jamie Barnes. And Stephanie Dixon. Everybody's nodding, talking now. Nice to meet you. Congratulations, all of you guys.
Thank you guys for coming. Thank you so much.
Okay. This time we move on to the approval of minutes of the regular meeting, September 9th, 2019. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to approve the regular minutes from the meeting of September 9th, 2019. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. David?
Yes.
Kenny? And Susie, yes. This time we move on to approval of minutes from the special meeting, September 30th, 2019.
Motion should we approve the special minutes?
What did you get? Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to accept the minutes from the special meeting, September 30th, 2019. Meeting, David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time we move on to the approval of conferences.
Please scroll through those. Let me know if you have any questions. Some of these that probably don't have as much in gym description, 218 is follow-up for anything from our gym testing policy. 221 is our CPR cards we issue to everybody. 225, 226 is the professional development training that our staff is at currently right now. 229, website. 232 is all of our field maintenance. 236, supplies for all of our buses. 239 is in the FCC LA department, they're accountable for the state for all their supplies for Ms. Johnson. 242 is books for the grade school. 243 through 248 is an insurance payback. You see all those names on there. When we prepaid, all those people who were no longer employed, they were advanced a month, so we were reimbursing that back to them what had been prepaid. 253 is composition for the band, and then 257 is annual renewal from the grade school libraries, book flicks, online. 5, 6, and 7 are AC units. FFA is one, middle school's one, and high school's one. 20 is supplies for the grade school cafeteria, two stainless steel tables included in there. Then Ms. Clompton was our latest hire. Same thing on Act 0003 with insurance for our latest hire.
Any questions, comments? Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Kenny, to approve the conferences as listed. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Just going to move on to other financial reports.
Anything in there? You see, some of that stuff, when you look at month to month, our GFR, actually right now is down, but what we got last year from our O-Circle grant, we collected $62,000. This year, we've only got paid back $8,000 of that. Payroll, the biggest difference in the payroll you see right there, we had a lot of people getting accrued some overtime this year that did not accrue it, excuse me, last year that did not accrue it this year. Oh, that was the O-Circle stuff I was just talking about. What we didn't claim, last year we claimed, we got $62,000 in claims this year, so we've only claimed eight, so that other will be claimed in the next couple of months. So where it might look bad when you just look at September, we're going to claim those reimbursements from the state in the next two months, so we will actually be up from where we are. Extra duty last year was $24,000. This year, we've only had $15,000 in the month of September. A lot of that was from cafeteria, as well as our students. We had nine students as part of our OT rehab program. This year, we only have two, so we're down seven workers. That's where some of those savings accounted for. Last year, we paid out $1,600 in subs in the first month that we didn't this year, and then as well as overtime for drivers, excuse me, for bus drivers. And then last year, we did drivers in, and the month of September, we don't have a fall drivers in program currently. So bills are up $34,000, but they're actually saying it'll even out in the next two months. So when it looks bad, I'm not worried about it overall. We're going to see that come back in the next two months.
Okay. This time we move on to public comment. The Board of Education invites public comment at this point in the regular meeting. A, comments concerning agenda items, no one present for that. B, other comments in accordance with the policy, the ED-R, no one present for that. Information items, superintendent's reports.
Brief forgiveness and congratulations. We've already talked about the cheerleaders, best ever finish at state. Our academic team currently sits at 19-2, pretty impressive run so far by those guys that hosted two meets at home. Everything else will be on the road. For FFA students, we had 13 students from our FFA, excuse me, 13 different awards. We had a couple of multiple award winners, so getting a lot of students involved in FFA and getting a lot of accolades, participating in some things that we haven't in the past, so it's good to see those students get recognized for that. Our band competed twice so far, once in Oak Mulley and once in Bags. They've made the finals of both of those. Our first nine weeks is just completed this Thursday, October 17th. Will be a day of professional development, and also celebrations for our staff and what they've been able to achieve with our state standards in the first nine weeks. They'll be sharing that information with each other Thursday. That professional development day, like I said, the main focus is celebrations. Our process educationally with academics is a four-question process. Always ask ourselves what we want students to know, and then we're going to ask, how do they know if they know it? How do we know that? There's multiple different ways to do that. And then two things are going to happen. Either students are going to learn it, or they're not going to learn it. And then the question is, we have to continue to answer ourselves, is when those kids don't learn the first time, what are we going to go back and do? And then kids, they'll master it the first time, and then we have to ask, what are we going to continue to do? Every student deserves to be pushed at whatever that level is, so that's what Thursday's going to be for our staff, is a reflection on those first nine weeks on what we've taught, what's been learned, and then what are we going to do with those kids who have already learned it, to continue to push them, and then what are we going to do with those students who haven't? You see in the bottom, it's a focus on learning, and that's kind of the difference in the communication. Typically, in the past, it's been a focus on teaching. Well, if that's all we talk about, we don't know if the product has got there, so the focus has to be on the learning part of it, and that's going to be a good day of celebrations for our staff on the 17th. Professional development, got a couple of things going on with staff right now. Seven teachers, and two, myself and Dr. Kettles, went up to the site and visited at Warner. They participate in the PLC processes. What we're looking at, the PLC process is professional learning communities. It is those four questions. It's giving professionals the time to be professionals, for them to be trusted, to improve outcomes for kids, and us as leaders is giving them time to meet together, to talk about those four questions and improve what matters for kids. So Warner has been doing that process for a while, so we went up there and visited them. We have seven staff members currently. They left at 8:00 yesterday, drove to San Antonio, and they'll be there through Wednesday. They're going to come back this Thursday and teach each of our three sites what they learned for the last three days in San Antonio, as we look to learn the PLC process and how that might be implemented here to help our students. Gear Up, Gear Up comes from the University of Oklahoma, the K-20 Center. They will be at the middle school, October 17th. This is their second day they've come over. They will be focusing on authentic learning practices and embedding technology with students in the classroom. King Devic is a brand-new reading intervention program that I learned about this past August. It's something the Choctaw Nation has really been pushing for school districts, and they've worked with Durant. Durant has struggled for several years, not uncommon, on helping younger students, early childhood, learning to read and getting to read. Well, they've started this King Devic Intervention Program and have had phenomenal success, so the Choctaws are helping supplement some of the cost of that. The King Devic Program is going to come to the grade school and touch base with our teachers and kind of give them an introduction of what that might be. Mrs. Mayhull and I met this past week on our results from summer school and summer interventions, and talking to her. We just, we haven't got the outcomes we've wanted for the last four years as a part of our grade school, summer school, so this is a possible tweak, not only to summer school, but to our reading program at the earlier grades. So we're going to look at that on the 17th at the grade school. And then our admin, our principals, Special Ed Director, myself, our federal programs Director, are doing a book study this semester on the art science of teaching. We have a book here, if you guys are interested in following up or following along. We do have copies of that, and today was our first day to participate in that book study. Projects going on, want to thank our Booster Club. If you noticed at the game the other night, the awnings at our visitor and home interest have been completed, as well as the one over the concession stand in softball. Much needed upgrade, and we appreciate that. The HVAC at the Ag has been completed, as well as one at the high school and middle school. That's something we have concerns about. Seems like we've been losing some air conditioning machines. A lot of them are at the end of their 15, 20-year life, as well as one of our refrigerators at the middle school, so that's something we're keeping an eye on. LED, we did some LED conversion at the end of last, at last year, they came in, did that. Had a pretty extensive punch list went over with them in terms of paying them out. They came and completed that punch list, so we have paid out on that service from last year. Roofing facilities, we had a review looking at, you talked to our principals, confirmed with them again this morning, number-one priority currently right now is leaky roofs. Anything we do within the building could potentially continue to be damaged every time it rains. Every one of our sites, every one of our schools has issues with roof leaks, so we're going to be looking to address that with you guys in the future. Our finishing, implementing all of our internet access points as part of our upgrade through E-rate, and then have started getting some consulting on the signage down there on Seventh and Main Street, and what we need to do to make sure that is up and functioning and running, so we'll be able to bring you some options of that in the future. Upcoming, Ray Panic Button sent an email, talked about that. That's a grant from the State Department that they secured for all schools in Oklahoma to be able to utilize this app that will just be strictly for our staff to use in terms of making alerts for any safety and security, from fire, from active shooter, from tornado to anything. So we're looking to onboard that, and that should happen in the next month. We're currently transitioning our website, we've talked about that approval before. We've had two onboarding meetings with them, and you should see that upgrade in the next couple of months. Staff recognition, the tradition on the last football game, when we get our community and they recognize all of our staff members, we begin the process of that. That is November 8th planning, and then basketball has already started. Really, the girls have started, we've noticed a couple of cheerleaders out tonight, they've had their second scrimmage today, and then middle school will be starting shortly as well. So just some pictures of stuff going on, a lot of great things going on, big week for homecoming, a lot of student activities going on at this time. Next month coming up, we have parent-teacher conference tomorrow night. Our drama one-act play is 7:45 at the high school tomorrow night. Want to invite everybody to that. Fall break for students is this Thursday, Friday, and next Monday. Our academic team has got selected, they participated at Rogers State University. They've already filmed it, but it will be available to view on cable TV, Channel 35, October 21st at 7:30 PM. They are prizes for that, there's student scholarships, $1,000, $2,000 scholarships that our students can get from that. Currently in our region, we have, again, we're 19-2, but one of our students is the top point getter in this region. I've been in academic, they keep track of per student, but also per school, so we have the number-one rated individual currently in our region, so academic teams do it very well. Next board meeting, November 11th, at 7:00, right here.
Okay. Thank you for that, Adam.
Welcome.
Moving on to action topics. A, public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment on past and future expenditures and the proposed 1920 operational budget with more consideration to adopt the 1920 operational budget as presented.
Not a ton of change on the budget from last year to this year. We really kept on the top right on our building fund, budgeted 388. We'll have 884 total in that fund. There might be some future considerations, but I don't have any numbers at this time with roofs and leaks, but that could, that could be something I bring back to the table and say, hey, I'd like to increase the budget in that area, but until I get a good figure, we're pretty much holding, I'm pretty steady on where we were last year. Really, everything on that page is very, very similar to last year's budget.
Make a motion to approve the budget?
Motion made by David, seconded by Kenny, to receive the expenditures and propose 1920 operational budget with more consideration to adopt the 1920 operational budget as presented. David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? And Susie, yes. Action topic B, consideration of college remediation report and dropout report.
Profiles are from 2018. Of course, we're always behind when they compile that stuff and share it with us, so what you look at is from that year. O-E-Q-A is one who prepares that for us, so if there's anything specific that you're looking at, it is going to be all from '18 and specific to ninth through 12th grades at Stigler Public Schools.
Motion to re-prove the college remediation report.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to accept the college remediation report and dropout report. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time we move on to action topic C, consideration of renewal or lease purchase of special education vests.
Plus we have, this is the last payment on this lease purchase.
Make a motion that we renew the lease on the special education.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to remove the lease purchase of special education vests. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time we move on to topic D, consideration of approval of FCC LA attending and transporting students by school via the FCC LA National Fall Leadership Conference in Dallas, Texas, November 15th through 17th, 2019.
Make a motion we approve the FCC LA National Fall Leadership Conference in Dallas.
Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to allow the FCC LA to attend and transport students by school vehicle to the National Fall Leadership Conference in Dallas, November 15th through 17th, 2019. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic E, consideration to allow the athletic student booster, the Athletic Booster Club to transfer $500 in the Megan Sucks account at Farmer State Bank for the purpose of student scholarships.
Total transparency, I mean, it could have probably been an easy transfer without a board action, but it just wasn't set up in their funds for scholarship. Everything in that activity account does go to students, will still continue to go to students, so along with the board of the Booster Club, I would like to make that recommendation that they're allowed to transfer that.
I'll make a motion to allow the Booster Club to, Athletic Booster Club to transfer $500 to Megan Sucks account.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David, to allow the Athletic Booster Club to transfer $500 into the Megan Sucks account at Farmer State Bank for the purpose of student scholarships. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer? And Susie, yes. Action topic E, consideration to proceed in contracting with OSSVA for whole board training.
This is something I've approached them about, talked, October 28th is something that's the only date that they have available for this in the next month. If it's something we want to consider in the future, we can look at options. The cost to us would be $600. The benefit to us as a board member, you would get three credits, a legal credit, ethics credit, open meeting credit. What the purpose of the whole board training is just for her to come in and discuss and talk about roles and responsibilities, the board, the superintendent, goal-setting, and also get those credits. So who would be doing, would be Ann Kane, she's retired superintendent from Stillwater, yes. But would like to look into setting a date with you guys to possibly do that. So what I would be asking you for tonight is approval to look into contracting with them at the cost of $600, and then setting a date that works with your schedules.
Three.
Three, correct, one in each of those areas.
We're not going to set the date tonight, Craig.
She has said October 28th. I mean, if that's something, I know you guys would have to look at calendars, and if you guys did give me approval, I would just have to, I would have to follow up with you guys and pick a date, whether it was that day or something in the future.
I'll make a motion that we allow Mr. O'Champ to proceed in contracting with OSSVA for whole board training.
I'll second.
To set the date. Where'd you set? Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David, David to proceed in contracting with the OSSVA for the whole board training. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic G, consideration to approve the ACT test to be administered by the school district.
For us to do this, we have to show we've had board approvals or formality.
Make a motion that we approve the ACT test to be administered by the school district. Question made by Jennifer, seconded by Kenny, to approve the ACT test to be administered by the school district. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic H, discussion and possible board action to pass 2020 annual school election resolutions.
This is typically on our November agenda, just again, a formality we have to have. My comfort level was moving it up a month because it's four days after our November board meeting, so for some reason, we didn't get a quorum, and we didn't have that meeting, we would miss that deadline, so I've just moved it up a month.
Make a motion that we pass 2020 annual school election.
Question made by Kenny, seconded by David, to allow the board action to pass 2020 annual school election resolutions. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic I, consideration to approve the adoption of the following school policies. Number one, V.A.A.C., federal programs compliant, compliant resolution. Number two, D.E., salaries and expenses. Number three, D.E.-R1, salary schedules.
These are all brought to me by Dr. Kettles, it's Barb Bar. We're getting a federal audit this year, these are all requirements. He has a checklist to set up for that audit, he's getting the folder ready. We didn't have these policies in place, so this is, we have to have these policies, and they have to be board approved, so it's a request that we can get these approved, so we can be in compliance with our audits.
Make a motion that we approve the policies listed. Make a motion that we approve the policies as listed.
Motion made by Kenny, second by Jennifer, to approve the adoption of all the school policies, federal programs compliant, resolution, salaries and expenses, and salary schedules. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time we move on to executive session. Executive session, A, proposed executive session to discuss and act upon the following business as addressed by the statute, Title 25, Section 307(b) and 7 of the Open Meeting Act. Number one, discuss employment performance and ad of Bochamp for disclosure of information that violate confidentiality requirements of the state law. Number two, discussion of resignation of Pat Kate, school nurse, effective October 22nd, 2019. Number three, discussion to employ a school nurse for the remainder of the 1920 school year. Please.
I make a motion we convene to executive session.
Motion made by David, second by Jennifer, at 7:31 PM to convene an executive session. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Motion made by Kenny, second by David, to return the board to open session at 8:11 PM. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Members present during executive session were Kenny Whitson, David Huggins, Jennifer Turner, and Susan White. Adam Bochamp was also present. Board Attorney Brian Drummond was also present. No votes were taken. Kate's resignation. Any motion?
Oh, E. E's next.
I need a motion for E.
That would be worded how?
I know, that's what I was gonna say.
The motion, the motion should be to give Adam Bochamp the document, discuss the executive session.
I make a motion we give Adam Bochamp the document and information.
Discuss the executive session.
Discuss the executive session.
Second. Motion made by David, second by Jennifer, to give Adam Bochamp the document, discuss an executive session. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
I make a motion we accept the resignation of Pat Kate, school nurse.
Second. Motion made by David, second by Jennifer, to accept the resignation of Pat Kate, school nurse, effective October 22nd, 2019. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
I make a motion that we hire Melanie Rosenhofer as a school nurse.
Name second, please.
Second.
Motion made by David, second by Kenny, to employ Melanie Rosenhofer, school nurse, for the remainder of the 1920 school year. David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Any new business? Any new business?
Make a motion we adjourn.
Motion made at 8:14 PM by Kenny, second by Jennifer, to adjourn. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Second?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Sean.